Yeah.
Oh, we are human beings. We are allowed to make mistakes.
Thank you, Commissioner. They're always sneaking up on me.
All right, thank you.
Just not.
Okay, thank you. Bye. Hello, everyone.
Yeah, more.
I think we would. You want to join us?
Unless you're all joining me tomorrow, I'm not going to do.
Big most of us will be there. I'm gonna go to that thing where you learn about. A just. Learn about the one. Oh. What's it out? The name of it. A learning, you guys?
The Navy.
The Navy one? Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they're discussing it. They got David Burchell coming. I want to talk to Nate, but I don't care. I don't care what they do. I don't care. Being ex-Mate. Really talking to say or something like that in the early nineties.
Another lifetime, huh?
Most life parts on the grid. Are you ready?
I'm already whenever you are.
Have the mics on?
Yeah, I think the. This chat is say something in their testing.
Yes.
There, Jim.
Yeah.
Hey, well, six thirty somewhere. Call the planning commission regular meeting Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty five to order. Roll call.
Tony Harrison is absent. Mark Hall.
Here.
Chris Bowens absent. Sarah Trumbly.
Here.
Chris Rainey here. Gail Foodie here. Sean Donnell.
Here.
All right, and that's a core.
Approval of agenda.
I'm going to record the agenda. So.
All those are there?
I'm not.
All right. Approval of consent calendar. Is there consent calendars? There's nothing on it. There's nothing to approve. We're gonna skip that one. Disclosure conflicts of interest and ex parte communications. Any from any of our commissioners this time? None noted? Moving on. Guest speakers. Does the harbor commissioner or harbor master want to say anything at this point?
I'd like to just hear a listen.
There was no force on that, so. Was there?
No, no, there's none. We get to the planner's report. Page one. You have anything ambitious to say, or?
Um, does anybody have any questions?
Um. I. Does anybody else have a question? Close to go last.
No, I just I had a question about the transfer station, but or what they were doing up there, but my question was answered. On the report.
Um. During. I didn't know, and I didn't follow the meeting for the last city council. The fill lot. Was anything decided on that?
Yeah, they they voted to put it up our feet. They want to see what proposals come in.
Okay, so it is.
Yep.
So they are. Willing to sell that lot.
Yep, they are willing to sell it. One of their comments was that if a nonprofit would like to purchase it from the city and turn it into a park, that could also be an option. So.
Okay.
They're they're hoping to see all all proposals from all parties that are interested.
It's worth watching if you have time to go back and watch.
I started, and I'm like, well. We'll bring through this. Their meetings are too long.
I think I think the only thing that I want to point out is that there's a tsunami public presentation on Tuesday, the fifteenth, which is next Tuesday of July, and it's gonna be at six thirty here in this room, community room Z and B. So it's gonna be, they're gonna give us a whole presentation on tsunamis and specifically tsunamis in Cordova. So gonna be really informative and hoping to also live stream that, so. Everyone can watch.
Anybody else have questions? Hey, moving on, um. There is no unfinished business. So now we have score proposals for lot two, block seven A, Tidewater Development Park. Does anybody willing to make a motion? This is the second time we've had this happen.
Um.
Nobody's willing to even open it for discussion.
Yeah, if if somebody wants to open it for discussion, they can make the motion that's at hand, and then they can either vote in the affirmative for this, or they can vote it down, or they can discuss, or they can refer back to staff. There's also motion to postpone or motion to postpone indefinitely. There's a lot of options for motions, so. Um. You just continue your time, then look through the memo and decide what motion you would like to to go with.
Mr. Chair.
Sir. I move not to recommend to the city council to approve. Uh. Uh, release or purchase for lot two, block seven A, Tidewater Development Park.
So I think how you do it, you would make it in the affirmative, and then you would vote it down.
Okay, so you you have to move in the affirmative?
I I I believe that they have to be moved in the affirmative and then vote it against if you're wanting to do it that way.
Okay.
Yeah. I have a question. Um. I thought. When we pulled out a motion voted on, that was indication of support for it. Um. Not.
I thought in previous packets that Kevin split together, there's always been a like a
An alternate.
An alternate, yeah. Where you could
So that's.
Open it for discussion, but not, you know.
After talking to the city clerk, that that's not how they do it in the city council, and so we're trying to stick in line with what the city council does for their motions, and they try to do things in the affirmative. But if you look at the end, it says the planning commissioner make a motion to recommend or not recommend disposal of the property to either applicant and as in the summary and alternatives here at the end. Um, so. So. Yeah, okay. And. So I think that if you're moving to not recommend, it would be a motion. Uh. Empty port. Yeah. Think it would be to do this and then vote it down is what I would think is your motion. But I think also we can take a brief recess, and I think call is will for Susan. Uh, the third on that. Yeah, and we can throw a look back. That.
Mr. Chair. Sir, I move thirty seven.
Uh. Ten minutes?
Yeah.
Or five minutes, whatever you give that.
Okay, that sounds like. And let's put us on mute.
Yeah.
But does somebody want to make a motion?
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Sir.
I move to recommend the city council approve the proposal from Serenity Adventure Log LLC to lease or purchase lot two, block seven A, Tidewater Development Park.
For a second.
My second.
Do your motion, sir.
I am not in favor of this motion. I think on its face, the idea of selling this lot is untenable. I don't want to even entertain that. Um. There's a building there because there is a building there. Um. It's part of the artwork should be for boat stuff eventually. Uh, we're leasing it out because it is there. Eventually, we want to get rid of it, is my opinion. And so if someone has a use for it in the short term, or even, you know, the the, you know, indefinite term. We don't have the funding to get rid of it currently, but eventually it should be gone. I don't want that tied up in a private interest. Um. Especially one that I don't think really has lives to begin with. Um. Like, uh. Uh, the entities, if I can call them that, uh, that are proposing this. Um, Serenity Adventure Large is Serenity Seafoots and John Properties. You know, they're they're all owned by the same individual. Um, John Properties was listed as being derelict in their um. City assets earlier this year. Um, he's been in here this year getting extensions because he's already behind on existing projects. I I don't I don't think this is a tenable project.
Do your second, sir.
I would agree with Mr. Rainey about the being behind on the city sales tax. I don't think that we should be leasing new properties to people that are current with their existing tax basis. Um, I think if he was on a good standing, that would be favorable for this, but as things currently sit.
Yeah.
I'm I'm with Chris on that one. Um. And I also feel that the long term future of that lot is that it it will eventually need to be replaced. You know, the building will need to be replaced, and I just I think it's in the city's best interest to maintain ownership of the lot, and I I could, I think, I guess. I can see this going to a lease uh, for indefinite term, but I don't think it's in the city's best interest to sell the lot outright. Uh, I think it's too valuable of a lot in the harbor for Cordova for future economic opportunity, and I think it would. Um. Yeah, I I I don't. I don't see it in the city's best interest to go into private ownership.
Ma'am.
Yeah, uh, let's see more viable options for such a big chunk of our assets. So. Postponing till some of these develop as viables. A good idea.
Sure.
Yeah.
Ma'am.
Um, I guess I do not agree with selling it. Um, I just, I'm looking at the chunk that is outlined here, and it looks like the dry dock is on that, and I know that the city I'm pretty sure the harbor, um. That right there. Okay, I'm just looking at this right here, so.
This is the actual property, and that's when we cut out one.
Yeah. So I just, I think that if we ever develop that side of the harbor the way that the city had planned, that that is an integral part of of all that. Um. I do not agree with selling it outright. It's a great business, I, you know, an opportunity that maybe could do very well if it were located somewhere else. I just don't think that that is the spot for it.
Okay, well, um, I have a couple additional. One is his proposed cost of a hundred and thirty, I think it's a hundred and thirty five thousand, one thirty five. And the, if I went back and looked at the amended RFP. And it's and part of the problem is the RFP really doesn't explicitly say this is only gonna be leased. It just, it says because that's what the statute says for sale or lease, or at least for for sale. And so there's not a statute just for leasing, and that's that's an issue that we really kind of need to address. He does go into saying, yeah, I'll I'll do a lease if possible. But it's gonna cost the city to pay for whatever I did. That's what we're trying to avoid is spending money on something we're not gonna use. If we decide to develop it at a later date, it is leased. We don't want those costs. The minimum lease price on a amended RFP was something forty three hundred or four thousand something a month. And what he's offering is less than thirty months worth of lease for ownership of it. It's it's just the numbers don't work. It doesn't meet what our minimum really is. Um. If he wanted to go through a lease with like we did with the Forest Service, which we, it took a while to go through, and we got them. It's a each your facilities. When we're done, you either pull them or we're tearing them down when they go to do a refurbishing part project. But if we sell it, we have no control over that parcel ever again. Um, without going through eminent domain, which we don't want to start. And I think by selling it, we're, it's a big mistake. Bigger mistake. And the way he's got the lease portion written in his is not beneficial to the city because we have to pay for his improvements. And I don't want to pay for his improvements. We're trying to get use out of what we got, not buy something to basically give him something for two to thirty years. We have no idea. It could be thirty years before we ever get the funding to do the North River project, but we are gonna do it. My other issue with it is that area was kind of intended for a fuel facility. And if we sold it or leased, and he did stay, I don't know if it's compatible to have it right next to a lodge, a new, a fuel pool next to a lodge. My other big issue. Um, and I'm gonna refer that part to the staff to find out. I I tried to look, and I couldn't find anything. One thing, you know.
They can look that up, right?
He may know.
He knows, perfect.
Well, on that plan, uh, when we had it bid twice, we submitted that for grant. That whole facility would come out of there to be able to fit that fuel dock there. That's the only way it works. So, and you have to probably pull part of that grid up too, if not all of it. So, our bid bid proposal had that whole facility, including this, the, um, grid and everything gone. He'll do what we want to do over there. Top to them.
So, and we moved that fuel dock somewhere else. It would have to be further away from a lodge, and it would take another portion of what we can, we don't have.
Yeah, we determined it wasn't one of the places out there.
And we may have to take the Forest Service, which we now can do. So. Right. Um, any further comments? Sir.
No, I I believe that I'm settled.
Um. The motion is to move forward with it. Do I have a amended motion? Is that what we need to do?
Um, I think we just voted down.
Yeah, you just vote on the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, the motion that's at hand. Let me read it.
Okay, yeah, the motion is is written in that.
Yeah, it's just the motion that was written here. If you don't have, reread it, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Get to the right page. Uh. Recommend city council approve proposal from Serenity Enterprises to lease or purchase lot two, block seven A, Tidewater Development Park. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
May. May. And it gets voted down.
Do you want me to do a roll call vote? Or do you guys maybe do it with that? Is that everyone?
I think we're all in agreement.
Okay.
Um. Any audience comments?
Oh, yes.
Nope, we appreciate your comments, so frankly. Um, commissioner comments? We're just saying the same order.
No, I'm. I'm glad that everyone. Kinda has the same. Kind of got reaction to this one that uh I have, I think that. You know, we have. You know, we are in some sense, you know, stewards of. Community assets. We need to protect them. We need to, you know, make sure that they're getting. The maximum good out of them. So. Yeah. But.
I was reviewing the strategic plan and just trying to like look at language and then score the proposal and. Try to figure out, you know, like where. Where this might land. And one thing that I was looking at, I was in there, it said, yeah, promote small-scale tourism with a focus on improvements that benefit both visitors and residents. And that was one that I was like, okay, I could see how this would benefit the visitors, and then I guess the only residents that would be benefiting would be the owner of the lodge. And maybe whoever was working for him, but beyond that, I couldn't see how it would be a community benefit, so. That was something that was like kinda striking to me. I was like, yeah, I just don't feel good about this one.
Yeah, thank you guys. Take any time.
I agree with, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were bad. I got to, her shirts. Okay, I agree with Sean and Chris, just uh. Everything you guys said, so um, I just. I was also kinda disappointed that. We didn't hear from. From him here tonight. Maybe even to, you know. Talk to us about it a little bit more in depth. Um, I know it's fishing, but. Technology these days, so um. Yeah, thanks. That's a lot of work I know that you put into into this, so thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate that much. So, um, there were a couple other issues I had, but I can't remember what they were, so. Um. Appreciating that short meeting. Um.
All right, I'm going to return.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I have a finer question. I had somebody ask me.
It's really quick.